This is Talk to Seattle. I'm your host, Jason Rigdon. On this episode, we have Christopher Pagaro, who's running for Seattle City Council in the 2nd District. How are you today?
Doing great, thanks. Beautiful day out.
Yeah, yeah, it's wonderful out there. Could you tell me a little bit about yourself, maybe your background and experience?
Sure. Well, I am a 20-year resident of Seattle, moved here from Wisconsin after finishing my undergraduate from the University of Wisconsin at Stevens Point in sociology and moved out here to take a job at YMCA Camper College to teach outdoor environmental education until, and lived up on Orchids for about seven months. And then my student loan officers gave me a call and said, "You need to get serious about paying back these loans." So found my way to Seattle. Seattle was always intriguing to me growing up and really wanted to pursue a career and settle in Seattle, which is not an uncommon story for folks from the Midwest who are like myself or are gay, to find a city that is more welcoming and progressive. I'm Native American, a Mexican. I was born in La Rata, Texas. My mom is, my mom's side of the family is from Wisconsin and she's Menominee. From Menominee, reservation, a travel member, and she works for the tribal school at the United Nation in Wisconsin, just outside of Green Bay. Moved out here and it was really important for me to, I wasn't out to my family and I needed to find an urban space and a kind of a built family of my own before I was able to actually come out, growing up in a very conservative part of the United States. So came to Seattle, started my professional career. First, in the service industry, which is super tough, really struggled to make myself a living, paying rent and trying to eat, working in the service industry. Ended up meeting my first boyfriend and we moved in together. He was really sick with HIV and at the time I didn't know that. We figured that out as he started to get sick. And then we were together for four and a half years and he ended up passing from HIV/AIDS in 2004. And the struggle that we had trying to live together with him being very ill, me working in the nonprofit sector, renting, we struggled quite a bit during that time. We're in line at the food bank once a week just to maintain some access to food and those resources. I found my way back to community, LGBTQ community, and played with the Seattle Quake rugby team, which really helped me to go through that grieving process. Lifelong AIDS Alliance, Gay City, Bailey Boucher were all incredibly supportive for us while we went through that transition. And then a few years later, after really going through that grieving process and that loss, found my way to work at the City of Seattle, at Seattle City Light. I had worked in the nonprofit sector at that point for about eight years at different capacities, but all within the environmental sector. Worked for an environmental organization that provided paid internships for youth into the environmental sector with the Bureau of Land Management, National Parks Service, and took that experience to City Light as an executive assistant for the Environment, Land and Licensing business unit at City Light. Quickly, I learned about the City of Seattle's Race and Social Justice Initiative and applied to become a core team member and have done that work for 10 years now. Been at the city for 12 years. I've been a part of the city's Race and Social Justice Core Team for about 10 years now and have been doing work with LGBTQ equity work. I was the founder of the City of Seattle's LGBTQ affinity group called Sequel, where we look at equity issues for LGBTQ employees, where our existing inequities and policy, and how do we change those policies to better than produce results for public policy for the larger community. After eight years of employment as a permanent employee at City Light, I saw an opportunity with the city's Equity and Environment Initiative and Agenda to really build, I wanted to build a program that was really geared towards action, towards our said commitment towards race and social justice within the environmental sector at the city, so Environment, Land Licensing Group. And so I proposed to start a program called the Environmental Equity Program at City Light. I had a resignation position after eight years and given my permanent status and take a three-year term limited role to do that work, to really establish the program and make a case that we needed to do that work. And after three years, we went through the budget process with the city council and mayor's office and were able to establish a permanent program. And I had to apply, a city job, so you don't get automatically put into that position. So I applied and interviewed and was able to get the permanent position. And so the work of the Environmental Equity Program is really looking at how do we build green job pathways? How do we mitigate our negative impact in just doing a regular business for communities of color, immigrant and refugee, limited English proficient and low-income folks? So the combined work that I've done at the city around race and social justice, LGBTQ equity, environmental equity, and really with the core of that, using racial equity analysis, is the experience that I have built and what I want to bring in regards to this position for Seattle City Council District 2. It's a long answer.
So it sounds like you've got quite a long history of community involvement.
Yeah, and continuing to build upon that, I thought about running for city council for, or at least considering at some point, doing that work. But I needed to gain my internal work, professional experience internally at the city, the tools that know the city and be an internal advocate for community. And then the last four or five years has really been the external part, working with community and bringing those voices into how we shape environmental programs and policies, number one. Number two, looking at the larger cities, work around race and social justice and impacts as we build programs and policies there. So, yeah.
So then what made you want to run for this office right now?
I think really what I see is, especially right this session of this election cycle, we have so many folks that are leaving city council that I think it's incredibly urgent that we have folks from an internal perspective, or at least know the system really well, that bring a strong equity lens, that can leverage the community's voice internally to impact how the city works, so that to make sure that we're not continuing to negatively impact the community from gentrification displacement perspective as we just do our work, do our jobs. And I've been able to leverage my internal work as a bureau activist or pushing against status quo for the sake and advocacy of community. I think I've been able to do that really well. I think we need a leader within the city council position to continue that work. And I think that the issues of District 2, the issues larger within the city around continuing inequity, around access to salaries and pay, our homelessness crisis, or really gentrification displacement, that we need someone that has that strong voice that can do it quickly tomorrow. That's, you know, I've been doing this work for many years now and regardless of the outcome of this election cycle, I'll continue doing that work. But I'd like to bring that success and that experience at the larger district level and a district that really needs that voice.
And could you tell me a little bit about your district?
District 2, we are the largest district in all of the districts in Seattle. We're the most ethically and racially diverse, economically diverse. I think we have the highest percentage of union membership within our district. So we have two arenas and sports venues, but then we also have many, many families that come from immigrant refugee status, low-income folks. I think one of the things that I love about our district is incredible diversity, but also that we're really a giving, family-oriented district. When we, prior to the current house that we live in, near Mount Baker Light Rail Station, we live at the north end of Beacon Hill. And as the homeless crisis was growing and we saw a continued number of folks living in tents near the Dejounte Park green space along the I-90 overpass and also state property along the I-90 corridor. Instead of our community coming in and trying to push people out, we brought food and tables and set up meals and welcomed folks in saying, you know, "We understand that you're in struggle, but we want to make sure that you are welcome, that you have access to a meal and we want to sit down and get to know who you are." And I see that happen every day when I go to, on top of Beacon Hill to pick up my kids from preschool and elementary school. We, you know, we're a giving community. I think one of the biggest challenges that we see within our community is a lot of decisions seem to be made without an equitable kind of responsibility for all districts within our city to really address some of the challenges that we all face. So although we want to continue to provide that, I love that aspect of the community, I think really making sure that we all equally are taking on that responsibility, find solutions for those problems.
And so what do you think are the biggest challenges facing your district right now?
The biggest issues in District 2 are really gentrification displacement and equal access to wealth and how we can build wealth within our district. I think you're being the most diverse district ethnically and racially that when we look from a systemic oppressive kind of perspective or undoing kind of the systemic oppressions as they exist, the city has a part to play in regards to policy, but also other pieces around our banking system, our real estate and housing system, small businesses and family businesses, and who has access to wealth sources. So that's a big part to play. And I think, again, if I go back to my experience at the city and connection to the city's Race and Social Justice Initiative and the work that I've done, if we can build either, you know, I like the idea of supporting a public banking system that really has a strong connection to race and social justice and equity and who has those systems. I myself, when we were looking at buying a house, one of my concerns from a systemic level was my last name, Pagaro. Would that mean that I would get a higher interest rate or not even get a loan to buy a house? So these systems really continue to be pervasive in who has access, who has really access to the American dream, who can buy a home, who can have a family and be successful and thrive in a city. So those have real impacts and outcomes played out every day within our district. So the city has a part to play, but, and a big part of that is bringing the right people together to really have, to drive this idea of equity and inclusion, equal outcomes. We, if we look again at other systems within our city, our district, and inequitable outcomes and disparity, we can look at our education system. What are the budgets that we have? How do we build budgets for enrichment programs for our school systems to get the benefit from those systems? If we look at the Bike Master Plan, how are we looking from an equitable perspective of how much resources are put within each of the districts and how the city puts those out? So all of those, all of those different pieces of the puzzle have to have an equity lens applied. And we see disparity play out within discipline in schools and that becoming a pipeline of discipline from schools into prison later on for predominantly our youth of color, black and brown kids. And then once we get into the criminal justice system as black and brown folks, who ends up going to jail? You know, and those cycles continue to then feed back into poverty. And then we see that again as a root of homelessness and that cycle continuing. So I think there are great programs that are being looked at, that are being implemented, like LEED. Basically, the police, SPD, looks at low-level offenders of crime and looks at keeping them out of the jail system, the criminal justice system, and putting them into areas of either access to health counselors, addiction counselors, job placements, other more positive ways that eventually lead to more of a restorative justice model. So those systems are more equitable and what I'd like to see more of as we try to address a lot of the issues within District 2.
Thank you so much for talking about that stuff. I'll get up on my little soapbox and just say one thing that's frustrating me about talking to so many people in this city is they don't, the biggest issue that I see is that the prosperity is so unequal, it's so uneven. And it's causing huge problems in the city. So I'll get off and stop giving my opinion. What do you think are the biggest issues facing the city yourself?
I'm going to go back to that comment if you don't mind. I just want to give an example. I think one thing, you know, as I was contemplating making a run for city council, one thing that I came up with right away and something that we've done within the program of, at the city that I'm the manager for, is looking for opportunities for, you know, either to the city, you know, looking at internship, paid internship programs, STEM programs, which are science, technology, engineering and math. That's an example of a kind of specific STEM program that we could connect to a large technology corporation that are heavily represented in the Seattle area. I think one of the issues as we look at gentrification displacement is how do we support the existing diverse communities that have lived here for a long time to be part of that, the success that our regional large corporations are experiencing because of the, again, I would bring that back to the richness of our region as a progressive, wonderful city that's incredibly diverse, you know, how do we take that richness and what they've benefited from, you know, planting the seeds here and growing into large multinational global corporations? Now, we need to find ways for them to also bring back that success and back into our communities to help feed our communities, to continue to bring them up so that, again, we can thrive in place. We're not being pushed out at the success of our large technology companies. One of the effects of that success and their presence is that displacement and growing displacement or growing wealth inequity. I think there's pathways of finding a champion, either Microsoft or Amazon, and saying, "We want you to bring a program that helps benefit our communities, to help be part of the solutions to mitigate gentrification displacement within our region." Like, "We want you to be one of the next leaders within your corporations that come homegrown from Seattle." And so that's something I want to explore more of, and I think that the city can play a part in that. But, you know, I think those are potential ways of doing that. I'll come back to sort of the work that I've done in the Environmental Equity Program. One way that I've leveraged my knowledge within the system, the city has many policies around how we develop contracting consulting dollars and who we choose for those dollars. One program that we have is a priority hire, which at a certain level of consulting dollars, we have to go back in the community, make sure that communities are being uplifted within work, especially if it's around a geographical area. We know within the City of Seattle, geographically, the racial diversity within and economic diversity within a neighborhood. We know where the race and social justice neighborhoods and environmental justice neighborhoods are within the city. One of the things we really need to do is make sure that our contracting dollars are going into support programs that can bring up small businesses or small consultants to help with the large contracts or have access to some of the work that the city provides through contracting, consulting. And then also making sure that those contracting dollars are coming back in the community to uplift the community as well. So one program that I started was a vegetation management contract. It was a three-year contract and it was about $69,000. So it's not a huge amount of money, but we were able to establish through an exception process to bring those dollars back into South Park and Georgetown that supported youth to learn about vegetation management and then learn about internships and other opportunities within the city as a potential job pathway. The city has great jobs. We have pensions. We have a union. Most positions are unionized. So if we can get folks that are in high potential displacement areas of the city to consider a pathway to utility or city jobs, that's, those are all good things in maintaining a way for that displacement and gentrification to be mitigated. So that's an example. I've got other examples, but that's, you know, the work that I want to continue doing.
So probably the biggest issue right now in this race is homelessness. What do you think the city can do to help homeless folks?
You know, I think right now, there are, I think the latest number were 12,000 folks within King County that are experiencing homelessness, whether that's living in a tent or an encampment or in a car. I think that number actually currently is about 14,000 folks within the county. And there were 191 folks in 2018 that died while being homeless. And we had a lot of folks, I think there were four, maybe three or four folks that died through this last year's big snowstorm from exposure. You know, homelessness right now, the conversation is around, you know, homelessness, that it's predominantly folks that are addicted to drugs or alcohol, and really that number is about 35%. And so, you know, the vast majority of folks that are experiencing homelessness are there because of, you know, a rent increase or a house crisis, a breakup, a job loss. One thing, you know, our campaign is home, having a home, having a shelter is a human right. That the way that I look at solving the issue, I think the city needs to shift in looking at the issues, making sure that we house folks first. And once we have stability in housing, then we can start addressing other issues around mental health, addiction, access to job counseling and placement, and then access to other more permanent housing solutions. I think that there, you know, are, it's not a one solution, one size fits all. You know, homelessness is variable based on the person experiencing it. It's really a very personal experience. So we need to have complex solutions for the complex reasons why people are getting into homelessness. I really believe that the narrative of who's driving the conversation around homelessness and our solutions to homelessness are folks like, you know, myself. I'm a homeowner that lives on Beacon Hill and I have, you know, my husband and I have, we both have a pretty well-paying jobs. And really, we need to look at the folks that have experienced homelessness, those folks that are, that are, you know, we need to talk to renters and the challenges renters are experiencing, service workers that have high rent that are on the cusp of potentially being homeless because of a rental increase. I think we need to have more local control of our eviction and rental laws versus at the state level. And I think our state legislature and our city council and elected officials need to really push for local control of those laws. We need to increase affordable housing and low-income housing for families and density around our transit corridors. 75% of the city is a single-family zoned. We need to increase the zoning for multifamily zoning. So I think a combination of all these pieces will help at least get to stopping the bleeding and start decreasing the number of homeless folks experiencing that. But there are larger solutions that are needed and, you know, I myself, as a person that is living and thriving because I have a house, that perspective can't be the sole driver as we look at those most impacted by homelessness, need to be at the table to help us, help us drive what those solutions are. So from an equity standpoint, you know, we often try to raise the voices of those most impacted by inequity to help us find solutions because they're the experts. They know what they need. If a person has been in homelessness and found a way out, I want to talk to them and I want them to lead me to find solutions, you know, they know best. So I think we need to flip that narrative and really focus on, again, those most impacted. So, and you know, I think I'm a pretty, you know, I'm not the most intelligent person in the room. I'm kind of smart, but it's when we come together collectively to solve solutions that those are the most sustainable solutions. And I think the other, the other part of the narrative really needs to be, as the city continues to find success economically from the technology sector, that, again, like I mentioned earlier, we need to all thrive from that. And we are a stronger and healthier community when we all have the ability to thrive. When we have such huge disparity for so many folks, that really leads to an environment that isn't healthy and it's not sustainable. So from a business perspective, from a civics perspective, from an idea of becoming, becoming good, you know, we need to come to terms with, you know, we need to support everybody to be healthy and have access and have the ability to thrive. So that's, those are really kind of critical and center to my perspective. And again, whether I'm doing this in an elected position at city council, I'm doing it right now. That's my day, everyday job that I've done for the last 12 years. And I'll continue doing that job, whether it's in an elected role or not. And I think we need to continue to drive that kind of narrative of equity.
Another really hot issue right now is transportation. What can the city do to help our transportation system?
We're really lucky where we live. We live pretty close to the Mount Baker Light Rail Station. I think the more that we can build a robust transportation system, like Link Light Rail, are, we have an incredible bus system that is electrified for the most part. We need to continue to build upon our public transit systems, making them cost-effective for families, folks that are, you know, working within the service industry. We have a new system that has been launched by Seattle Department of Transportation called VIA, down here in District 2. So folks that are living, you know, relatively far away from Link Light Rail stations can put an app on their phone that they can, like their ride share, they can use their Orca card to get a ride from their house to Link Light Rail Station. So I think those systems are really, are important. We need to continue looking at that as we further try to meet our obligation to mitigating climate impacts of single occupancy vehicles. The city has a network of charging stations that we're about to build throughout the city. And we're looking at electrifying whatever we can, that is either public transit or, you know, the diesel coming off of the port. There's so many opportunities for electrification that can be another way to mitigate our greenhouse gas output as a city, but then also make sure that we have an equitable access to those systems for everyone, regardless of income level. I think the City Light and the city are looking at ways that we can make that accessible to most folks. Some of the systems that we have in place and from an equity perspective, so if we look at one system, like Find It, Fix It, we call it PPI, or we look at, or charging stations or anything that has a screen that, you know, gives you options. So Find It, Fix It smartphone app, not everyone has access to the smartphone. So how do we increase that same system, which is what we call a complaint-based system? It's built for people that have lots of access. How do we continue to build systems that folks that don't have a smartphone can still access the same information or provide information to the city? If we look at a charging station, for instance, we've got one up here on Beacon Hill. That charging station, the first screen is from the dominant English narrative or language. A lot of folks on Beacon Hill don't speak English as a first language. So as the city does work like that, and we have to make sure that we have access for all folks, regardless of English or income, that as we build systems, that we're looking at those systems equitably. I don't believe in broken people. I believe that we have broken systems and that the better systems that we create from an equitable perspective, we can help people along that path in some of the issues that we, the biggest issues that we see.
You touched on it earlier, but what can the city do to help improve housing affordability?
You know, I think it's a matter of scale. We declared a homeless crisis four years ago and at that point committed to building 6,000 public housing, low-income affordable housing units. housing units. And we haven't built that yet. So, the MHA and Hala and MHA to increase density and height across the city by neighborhood, that, that process has passed. We, the city went to each neighborhood to determine what percentage, how high, how dense each of those neighborhoods would be. But I think the, the biggest failure of Hala and MHA is that the percentages were too low of a percentage of housing, low-income housing that would be part of that process. And, and also that it was an optional, an option for developers to either build it or to put it into the city coffers or, you know, a bank to build that housing. I think it should have been a larger percentage and that it was mandatory that as new developments came in, that you needed to have a certain percentage that were low-income affordable housing. Lisa Herbl has an idea that, that I love, and it's as new development comes in, if there's going to be displacement of low-income housing that we will require for the developer to replace that low-income housing, one for one. I think we need to look at, you know, a larger percentage of, of that one for one. Maybe it's one, you know, two for one. I don't, I don't know what that looks like, but I think we need to figure that out as a, as a collective within the, all the city council needs to figure that out in the city. Other programs that I've seen, there's Mercy Housing is an incredible program that is building low-income housing throughout the city. We have Othello Family Housing. That's another development kitty corner for Othello Family Housing, Othello Station. Three blocks from our house is Mount Baker Family Housing. It's, it's low-income housing that is locked in at 30% for folks making 60% of median income within the city. We have Roberto Myasus Plaza atop of Beacon Hill. We need, you know, we need to increase the number of, of family housing units like that, that lock in at 30% of, of your income to maintain and thrive in place. Hi, Hirabashi, I think I'm saying that name wrong, place in the International District, much like Roberto Myasus Plaza. One thing that is incredible about those two housing examples are that they are incredibly, they're, they're, the design of the buildings themselves and the services and the businesses that they are looking to house within those, those buildings are representative of the communities that exist there now. So, they're, they're a stake in the, in the ground that says, this is our community and it's a way for us to have that community persist. We've seen things like Rainbow Crosswalks and within the city. And that's one way to symbolically say that there's been a community that has existed here historically, and we want to honor that community. But we need to be able to thrive in place. And that means that the businesses that are within our, our neighborhoods, that we can make sure that those also stay in place. So, there may be a grocery store that, that you can only buy that one thing there that for our, our ethnic community or our, racial community, that that is really important. And one thing that, that our, that our campaign is committed to doing is creating a community identified culturally significant business fund where a community can determine that we can't lose that important business. And we, we want to make sure that there, there are funds going to maintain and mitigate them from displacement and gentrification to find a way. And I haven't figured out how that would work. We'd have to figure that out, how to pay for that. But that's, that's an important thing, I think. It's been done in other, other cities, a way to mitigate that displacement. And I think I went off subject.
It's, it's, it's quite all right. You know, what I was going to tell you is that, you know, this is, you know, this isn't, this isn't radio. It's a podcast. People want to hear this. That's, that's why they listen to shows like this instead of just the radio, is they want to hear just, you know, people just talking. You know, I ask these open-ended questions to just kind of get people talking. It's not necessarily like I need an answer. It's more that I really appreciate, like, it just shows like how much you know about it, like, and your passion. You know, you, you understand the complexities of a lot of this stuff, that you can't just give like a simple, I don't know, like a shiny answer, you know, because you understand that there's all, there's moving parts here. There's all kinds of options and problems.
You know, it's, it's funny, as we get into debates, and I've, I've never done these things before. So, this is all news for me, but a lot of the debates will start. We've got a lot of people. So, there's 55 people. I haven't been in that large of a debate. But, you know, there's been a few of us, they, they want us to introduce ourselves in a minute and then answer the question. And you've got two minutes. It's like, you know what? Number one, I'm a complex person. I've got complex experiences. These are complex issues. We need to have a larger dialogue. And, and I can't have a quick snappy answer because I think one of the problems that we face is when we come up with these one-size-fits-all solutions, they really tend to have incredible negative unintended consequences for folks like myself. I'm a queer biracial guy, and I've experienced displacement and gentrification inequity my whole life. So, I think we have to be able to give space so that we're not continuing to uplift oppression as it exists within dominant cultures. So, those, I think that's my passion, like the work that I want to do. And it's really hard to have to fit it in a nice neat little box because it's not nice and neat. So...
But I forget, somebody was talking about, you know, one thing about trying to talk about, you know, the systemic problems. It's the, the narrative, that the dominant narrative, it's easy to say things that fit within that narrative, but as soon as you go outside of it, it takes more time to explain.
Yeah. You got to catch everyone up. So, it's hard. It's hard stuff.
All right. So, I got one last question for you. Well, two last questions. But one's just like, how can people find out more? So, we live in very polarized times. How will you, as a city leader, work to bring people together?
You know, I think, just to comment on that polarized time right now, you know, if we look at the federal level and the Trump administration and kind of social media and popular culture, the narrative is what do I gain? You know, how do I benefit? I need to have the shiniest, wealthiest, the newest thing. And, and that, that's good for whom? Like that, the three questions I ask, who decides, who pays, and who benefits? I think when we start looking at systems, again, the narrative I want to drive is when we all have the ability to thrive, when we all have the ability to be uplifted and to be healthy, we're all better for that. And so, I think that narrative and connecting to even the most wealthy people, even, you know, wealthy predominantly white homeowners that are driving the narrative of like our, what the problems are around homelessness and how we find solutions. Like, if I can drive to them, if we can solve the homelessness crisis and we, we do it appropriately and uplift those folks experiencing it versus what your needs are right now, we, in the long run, you will benefit from that. And, and so, so that's, you know, the work that I've done is as, as a, as a biracial gay man, when I talk about race and social justice or equity and inclusion to predominantly white crowd, I have to convince folks why that makes sense for them. What is their gain for it? And, and why is uplifting someone that, that, that they don't know or they don't have a life experience with? Why does that benefit them? I think that's the hardest work that I have. There is a meme that I, did you see the movie, what's it called? Bird Box with Sandra Bullock?
No, I did not. I thought it was doing me too scary.
It was scary. It was, you know, kids were in bed when we watched it. But there's a scene where, well, so, I probably shouldn't talk about it because I'll give it away if someone wants to see it. Oh, my God, I just realized. I feel like I'm going to publish this with you. Anyway, spoiler, this is spoiler. There's a scene where, you know, it's bad if you open your eyes and see a demon, right? That, I'll, I'll leave it at that. And so, so I oftentimes look at my work as literally opening people's eyes to see what the problem is. And then, we have to, to work to mitigate that problem. And, and that's hard. If, if you're, if you're experiencing, if you've never experienced racism in your life, if you've never experienced inequity based on your name or your skin color, it's hard to, hard to explain and get people to understand that. My husband and I, he, he's white. You know, we had a three-day conversation about white privilege, but he, for him, it was very hard to understand that because of his experience to poverty and his experience as a gay man because of the oppression that he experienced there. It took us three days to get there. I'm like, oh, I see. It's not about me. It wasn't I necessarily gained as a white person. And that's what you're saying. It's about how the system is set up for some folks to gain from it and others that don't. And the work of, of equity is putting place more energy for folks that, that are in that disparity to be uplifted, to be at, at the starting point. Not to gain more, but just at the starting point. And so, you know, my work is to, to continue to make sure that everyone understands that and can come to the table to undo those oppressions. And so, that's a lot of work. I'll, I'll retire. Whether it's in an elected position or elsewhere, I'll retire in this work because it'll, it'll take more than my lifetime. There was a statistics I read somewhere, I think it was on like NPR's The Hidden Brain. They're talking about bias. And one thing that they talked about that was really revealing was bias around gay marriage and, and gay folks unemployment, which is, you know, going to be talked about at Supreme Court. It took about 10 years to increase acceptance of, of gay marriage. And for, in 10 years, it took that to, to have 50% of the population believe that that was okay and acceptance of that. For, if you look at race and disparity or just, if you look at racial outcomes and, the work that needs to be done there, the equivalent would take 113 years for it to come up to 50%, the majority of folks that believe that race is an issue. So, then we look at, you know, intersectional race and gender, race and sexual orientation, and you're compounding the time that it will take for the majority of the Americans to understand why it benefits all of us to address those issues. So, it's, it's going to take a long time. And, and I'm in it. I'm in it for the long game. And, and I've got kids. I've got family. My family are my neighbors and the people that I work with, people living on the street. That's my family too. And so, it's going to take us time to get there. But I, I believe we can do it. City government is a piece of the puzzle. There's so many pieces to that puzzle, and I'm willing to do that work.
And where can people find more information about your campaign?
Sure. District24Peguro.com. And let me spell Peguro. It's P-E-G-U-E-R-O. And just wondering how many people I triggered right now. Okay. Email me. We'll talk about it.
Well, thank you so much for your time and for coming on the show. I really appreciate it.
Thank you so much for the opportunity. And it's going to be a fun, exciting ride.